It's about me and how I was called to the apartment. Have you done anything that I was going to do? No, I thought it was against. So you have that. Thank you. The only thing that I could tell you is that most of them, they want to follow us.
Those are better.
Tolan.
And we're able to keep our doors.
Yeah, I can't afford to pay you till tomorrow.
Well, why? Why is it?
Oh, right.
She gets her allowance tomorrow.
And then they, if then they give you the.
No, it's twenty. You get a bet of twenty dollars.
That's right. I lost a bet, that's right, Sean, and I am good for my money.
Please, a bet.
I lost a bet, something about Will and Sean, I don't know.
I don't even remember what it was.
What was it?
I just know you lost.
That, boy.
I lost that bet the other night.
You did?
Not that I illegally gamble.
Paul's job. I would.
I'll remind you where it is.
Well, it was, I don't hate it, but I think he got it.
Okay.
Good. Um, let me see this, yeah, that's what I'm. Might be. Oh, okay. I think it's a little.
Already got it. Thank you, though.
Yeah, he was a little.
Welcome, everyone. You join me in the, uh, standing in the pledge allegiance and remain standing for the invocation, please?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This evening, we have Mr. Leonard Akers, the senior pastor of Liberty Hill Church, uh, to deliver our invocation. Welcome, Mr. Akers.
Let's pray. Lord, we thank you for this time, we thank you for this day, and thank you for all of these people who give so graciously their pride and attention and effort to welcome this city to be the best version that it can be. I pray, Lord, that you continue to guide them in all the ways that might lead them, walk them not to a consensus about what is best for all the citizens of this great city. And I pray, Lord, during those times where they aren't really finding a way to consensus, that you give them patience and deliberation, and that they would take their time to seek out a whole way for the best for this great city. Lord, we thank you for all the ways that you're at work, and we thank you above anything for bringing us the privilege of living in this city, in this community at this time. We love you, and we thank you for your love for us, praying all these things in your holy and precious name.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor Akers. I'd like to call it a order, our April sixteenth, uh, council meeting, two thousand twenty-one. This time, I'll have a consideration to approve, uh, the agenda. Do we have any changes or additions to that?
We've received a request from Tewilgar Pappas to remove their item from the agenda. Leave that here. Ten C.
Ten C.
And then I need to request an executive session for, uh, potential litigation.
Litigation?
Yes.
And I need to add a personnel matter to the executive session, so litigation and personnel.
Make a motion to approve as amended.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Do we need officially vote, Mr. Dyer, on removing the item C? Or we just do it for the agenda? Okay, great, thank you. We have no guests and visitors tonight, uh, officially, uh, so we'll move on to consideration to approve the minutes you have in your packet, the council meeting draft minutes of April first, uh, meeting. Any additions or revisions or a motion?
Motion to approve the minutes.
Motion approved, I have a second.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. All members voted to approve the minutes. Any informational items this evening? Or other announcements? I believe we have any, um, no one signed up for the ten-minute public input. So we will move on to the consent agenda. As usual, I will read the items on the consent agenda, if any council member would like any of these items removed for further discussion, we will move them, uh, to old business. Item A, approval of green infrastructure program update. Item B, approval of false alarm management contract. Item C, approval of two thousand twenty-one auction items. And item D, approval of property and casual insurance renewal. Any of those items? Anyone would like to remove any of those items? If not, I entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion to approve.
A motion to approve, I have a second. A motion to approve in a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Members voted to approve. Moving into old business, item A, discussion and possible action on proposed personal transportation vehicle district for Town Mill. Mr. Patton?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, council members, uh, there was a public hearing held at, uh, the last city council meeting in regards to this proposed, uh, personal transportation vehicle district. Uh, there were speakers, uh, uh, that spoke, uh. I did not make a copy of the email that came in, uh, about seven forty last night. All of the council members were copied on that email, is the reason I did not, uh, uh, make a paper copy for you all. I'm here to answer any questions you might have in, uh, regards to this proposal.
Thank you. I think for the record that you know we received last night was in, in favor, in approval of the.
That is correct, uh, was in support.
In support, okay. Any comments, discussion on this item?
I just had a, a question for Mr. Patton, uh, and maybe the group here. I recall in the last meeting, somebody mentioned that there are a couple, maybe three roads in Town Mill where the speed limit is above twenty-five miles an hour, is that, that, am, am I misrepresenting that?
I don't recall that. There are, uh, some streets, uh, that are, uh, within the summit at Town Mill that are private streets, that are behind, uh, the gate, uh, that, uh, could not be a part of the, uh, personal transportation vehicle district.
Understood, uh, so, but, but the ordinance, for clarification, for this and for future, um, proposals, is that the speed limit in the zone, the zone of discussion, is not to exceed twenty-five miles an hour, is that correct?
That is correct.
In any of the neighborhoods or areas that are proposing? Or any area in the neighborhood or area that's being proposed, uh, that, if it's greater than twenty-five miles an hour, then it cannot be included in that zone.
That is correct.
Okay, good, good, that's all I had, thank you.
Any further discussion?
Motion to approve the Town Mill Personal Transportation Vehicle District.
Second.
A motion approved in a second, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Everyone voted for the motion. Item B, discuss, uh, discussion and possible action on proposals, on proposed unified development code amendment to delete the planning commission. Mr. Patton?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, council members, a public hearing was conducted in, uh, regarding the proposed, uh, unified development code, uh, amendment, uh, basically, uh, deleting all to the planning commission, uh, uh, you have, uh, received some, uh, emails, uh, recently, uh, in regards, uh, uh, to this issue. I'm here to answer any questions you might have in regards to this proposal.
Thank you. I think we have responded to some of those emails just for clarification that, uh, Planning and Zoning Commission is only a recommend, uh, a recommending body, and council has always made the, the final decisions on planning and zoning. And council has, uh, during the pandemics, over the past year, has been, um, all the cases have been coming to council over that past year, so I think the goal, as discussed, uh, with this, um, proposed, uh, amendment was to, to actually improve the process and build in more public input, not less, um, with our process, and, uh, Mr. Patton or Mr. Peppers, could I ask, uh, one of you just to, again, kind of repeat the, the proposed process that would replace if council so chooses to, take action tonight to, to remove the?
Sure, uh, so our current process is, is three months, the proposed process would also be three months. Uh, applications would be due the first business day of the first month. During the first couple of weeks of that month, staff would review the application to make sure it's complete, um, at the council meeting, so the second meeting of that first month, the city council would receive information as to which applications had been received in that month. Um, after that council meeting and in compliance with all of the public notification rules, uh, we would start the process of public notification as to when the public hearing would be held. Uh, we would start posting signs on the property, and the applicant would be required to host a public input meeting with property owners, uh, that neighbor the site. Um, at the first meeting of the second month, the application, the full application packet, would be provided to the council and made available to the public as an informational item on the council agenda. At the second meeting of that month, staff would, uh, that item would be moved to new business, and staff would make a technical report to the mayor and council related to that application packet. Talk about the property, talk about the zoning of the properties, zoning of neighboring properties, what all is included in the application packet, uh, at that point. Following the second meeting, the council could have, uh, meetings with the applicant, uh, and those meetings would include formal notes that are taken by staff, uh, that would become part of, uh, the public record as well. The public hearing would be the first meeting of the third month, that's when all members of the public could speak for or against the project, so there's only one public hearing instead of two that we had before, but this is the third public meeting where the project would have been discussed in some manner. Um, after the public hearing, any questions that came up from the public hearing as it relates to questions, uh, that are asked by the council would be relayed by staff to the, uh, applicant, uh, so that we could provide those answers back to you before the, uh, second meeting of that third month, which would be the action meeting for the mayor and council. I'm happy to answer any particular questions on that process.
Thank you, Ms., Ms. Wilson.
I just wanted to clarify, uh, about the applicant meeting with citizens. After they, uh, filed their application, they could meet with citizens on their own at any time up until the meeting, the vote is taken, right?
That is correct.
But the city would not set up a meeting for them, they would be, you know, meeting with HOAs and other people, but they could do that at any time.
That is correct. They would be required, however, to host one public input meeting with property owners that are based on a radius of that property, um, and those, they would have to keep a log of who attended the meeting and records for the meeting, and they would have to provide that back to the city. So they can meet with anybody at any time except for the council, they can only meet with the council after the second meeting of the second month and before the public hearing, and they can meet with the public at any time, but they are required to have at least one public input meeting with the public prior to the public hearing.
And that will, they will receive that information when they meet on the second meeting, when they meet with the city manager and the development review team? They will be told at that time, you must hold a, a meeting of your own with the citizens.
It will be clear in the application packet, that, that, before they apply to begin with, that they're going to have to do a public input meeting.
Okay, so.
But we will verify that when the development review team does meet with them.
So if we pass this new, uh, ordinance from the planning commission, there'll be a new application process?
Yes, we'll have to have a new application process because we'll have to outline this to all of the, the future applicants.
Ms. McGrew?
Thank you. Mr. Peppers, um, to clarify for the public mostly, would you explain, uh, the rationale behind the applicant not speaking to the council after the public hearing?
Sure, uh, so the public hearing is actually a case, and so all of the discussions related to that case are recorded as part of the case file, so if there's potential litigation after the fact, there's a clear record of what was discussed, and so the council cannot have discussions with the actual applicant outside of that public hearing. Similarly, the council can't take, uh, comments in the public sec, uh, here at the, at the meeting from the public after the public hearing on the case as well, because you have to be able to offer both sides the opportunity to speak.
Is it okay for council to attend the community meeting to get a firsthand view and ear on what's discussed at those meetings?
I don't see why not.
Yeah, sure.
Okay.
It wouldn't be a requirement, though.
Right, but if we wanted to go and, and maybe gather a little extra information, and, um, can we talk to the public after the public hearing? You say we can't talk to the developer, but can we speak with the public about the case?
Traditionally, that's been done via email, um, you know, and the council can take emails at any time.
Well, you know as well as I do at Publix, people are going to stop you.
Sure.
Yeah. So we need to know if it's, um, okay to discuss it, or if we need to say, I'm really sorry, we, I can't talk about that if you want to put an email in for public record.
I'll let the city attorney make it.
Thank you.
Mr. Dyer?
All of, all of that's going to be a little bit tricky, um, from the, so, so to give you a little more background about the legal part of it, the, uh, Court of Appeals has issued an opinion that says a, uh, rezoning or a conditional use permit is like a trial, and there, and, and therefore, you know, there's due process and noted, and so the next step for them is to say rezonings are like a trial. So we're trying to protect against that a little bit. I, I think the safest thing to do is request written, uh, comments from the public.
Okay.
I, I know that's not going to be, uh, what you want to do, or, or, and so we can figure that out if it becomes a real problem.
I just need to know what's right. I don't, I'm comfortable with doing whatever's appropriate.
I mean, when, that, that was one thing about having the planning commission do the public hearing, it frees you up from that, but, um, I, 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 I would suggest at this point that we encourage written communication so that we can include that in the record.
Sure.
So then you get into, well, does the developer get to come in and respond to that? You know, there, it, that's what we're trying to figure out.
Well, that written email that we would receive from, uh, resident, we would just forward that to city manager and the appropriate staff person, don't you think?
Yes.
Yes.
I mean, I, I, again, I, I think we'll, we'll have to live with this for a little while, and, and you may think it's unworkable, and then we'll, like, just because of what the expectations that, uh, your constituents have on you, but, but it does present a legal, uh, quandary.
Okay.
Let's call it that.
Well, good to know. I can go by the rule.
While I'm up here, uh, I would suggest that, we've been talking about this policy, if, if you make a motion to approve the change, if you would add, adopt that policy, approve that policy that has been outlined, I think we're going to have to come back with further action to add the public participation meeting requirement, um, and some of these other things would go in the ordinance, but if you'll go ahead and adopt that as part of your motion to approve the change.
Well, Mr. Patton, I'm very excited about, um, the applicant having to have community meetings, I think that's going to be very important. Um, Mr. Peppers said, uh, communities nearby, would that be contiguous property, or would it be in a five-mile radius?
Well, the draft that, uh, the staff has prepared in regards to the com- community input meeting, uh, mirrors, uh, the requirements, uh, that are in, uh, the Cherokee County, uh, community input meeting requirements, as well as the city of Holly Springs, and, uh, the limit is one thousand, uh, feet from, uh, the subject property involved with that public hearing application.
Okay.
The city of Woodstock and their public, uh, input, or community input meeting policy, they specify five hundred feet. The draft, uh, that the staff has worked on, uh, borrowed some things from Cherokee County, Holly Springs, uh, DeKalb County, some of the reporting, uh, guidelines and all, uh, we borrowed, uh, from, uh, the city of Woodstock. There's a complete package, uh, that staff has worked on, uh, that, uh, city council, uh, will be, uh, receiving, uh, based upon, uh, if council makes a decision on this tonight.
Thank you.
And, and just for clarification on the, the public hearing process and what happens after that, nothing is changing there, that's, that's legal, that's law, there's nothing changing with this policy, so we don't have the authority to change that, so what is changing is, is the amount of time that citizens would be notified of development, which we're moving up by at least forty-five days by my calculations, uh, and also the time that the council will be notified of these projects, so we can have more input with, uh, citizens in that, um, again, the required meeting, required meeting with developers and citizens, uh, so, again, I'm a big, big, big fan of checks and balances, I think, in my opinion, we're a bit, we're actually building in more, not, not less, but.
Can I add a, a comment, Mayor?
Please do.
That occurred to me as I sat down, I think part of the answer to this two weeks after the public hearing and your voting, the idea is, there's going to be a lot of conversation beforehand, hopefully, and that the public hearing, because it's with the public participation meeting, and you're having conversation with the developer, hopefully, their presentation at the public hearing will be final, and there won't be a whole lot more, uh, questions that you, that's why we want you to talk to them ahead of time, so you can ask questions and, and the staff can get those questions, and so the more we can do before the public hearing, the better. And I, and my hope would be that that satisfies everything, and we can say, well, now we've had the public hearing, let's have a dead period and, and then act on it.
Thank you. One of the issues we're having before with the, you know, planning commission hearing and the council hearing, citizens were confused about which one to come to, what, which one was more important, and often we would have, uh, the planning commission public hearing, hear some concerns from them, and actually play, uh, change some of the plans, uh, by the council hearing, uh, and so, uh, there were changes to plans, and then, and then the, the, you know, the citizens who came to the planning commission hearing, you know, are not aware of the changes that were made, uh, during that time, so, uh, one other thing is that citizens, all the way up until the public hearing, again, being notified before, will have an opportunity to, to speak on any project at public input session, so, again, they're having a lot more opportunity for public input, uh, so they could speak up to, on any project, um, or development up through, you know, until the public hearing is closed, so. Ms. McGrew?
And I wanted to reiterate that this process would streamline it for, uh, staff and for the developers, also, the planning commission was an advisory board and would only bring recommendations to the council, we had the final vote on a project anyway, and I've found in, in my seven years here, that oftentimes council, council would deny a project that planning commission had advised us to accept, so they had a lot of frustrations with us on our denying projects and denying annexations, also, we put, would oftentimes put more strict conditions on a project than what the planning commission had done, so, and because we had the final vote anyway with the public to be aware that, uh, this isn't going to help us put forth any pet projects.
Correct. I agree. Mr. Carlin?
I have one question, applications that are currently in the process, how will they be resolved? If we have, if we still adopt this tonight?
Applications that have already been submitted, uh, will follow the existing, uh, guidelines, and, and of course, things are bypassing the planning commission now, but the implementation of, uh, the new process that the city manager talked about, uh, if, uh, you approve this ordinance amendment and adopt, uh, the, uh, community input, uh, policy tonight, if you will, that will take effect with the applications that would be submitted, uh, the first working day in May, uh, and follow that process from then, ultimately, uh, May would be a, a public hearing before, uh, council in July.
Thank you very much. And the only thing I noticed, that I'm the newest guy on the team, and this is all a little bit foreign to me, so to get ready for two weeks ago and then certainly for tonight, looked at other planning commission, other processes from other groups, I don't see anybody out there who's doing more than what we're doing here, like, as far as transparency, as far as citizen involvement, as far as having strict limitations on who can talk when, um, to make sure that everything's above board, that there's no question, a lot of times, people get upset behind their keyboards, and they complain about things that maybe they don't have any real basis to complain about, this has cut the legs out of a lot of that argument, because we're going to be so upfront with everyone, so I, I think it's an excellent process, and I certainly commend staff that's been working on it.
Thank you. I agree, when you read a headline that, you know, council's considering, you know, uh, eliminating the, the planning commission, and that's, that's all you read, uh, I, I can see why citizens would be alarmed by that, so, but again, the, the whole goal is to actually create more input from citizens and more opportunities to, to, to be involved in those decisions. Ms. McGrew?
We've gone without a planning commission for over a year now, uh, Mr. Patton, have there been any complaints or any problems with the process that we used in the past year?
None that, uh, our office has received, other than, uh, the few emails that, uh, all the council members have received during the day-to-day.
Okay, and will this process make it easier or harder for staff, or no change?
It's going to make it easier in the fact that, uh, there are two less nighttime meetings, staff has to attend.
Okay, so the city will save a little money not paying you to be here, um, but, so there.
Staff reports and, uh, you know, timeframes, that sort of thing, pretty much it's about the same as it is now.
And, Mr. Peppers, have you received any staff complaints, I mean, is it working fine from your end?
Actually, the, the individuals I've had the chance to talk to, both citizens and developers, like the new process from the standpoint that if you're under the old process, you might, you might be a developer that wants to build an, uh, apartment complex, so to speak, and you go to the planning commission, the planning commission says, yes, we recommend the project, so you start feeling good about it, and the residents at that meeting, you don't want the project feeling bad about it, so they don't show up at the council meeting because they think it's a foregoing conclusion, the developer shows up at the council meeting, council denies the project, now the developer's mad because he's getting mixed signals, and hopefully, it streamlines all that, there's one group that makes the final decision, and there's one case that everybody gets to hear publicly, so you hear the same thing at that one case that you would have had to go to two meetings to have tried to heard, uh, to try to hear before, and residents are having to try to figure out what meeting to attend to make their voices known, so.
Additionally, we also have, uh, our roadmap now, which is, really defines vision of what, what we want going forward, uh, so we, we have that to start with, it's a great place for developers to start, um, but again, council makes the final decision, so citizens should be given their input to council on these projects. Uh, I would like to ask council members if they've had any complaints from citizens about the process we've used over the past year.
I've not received any this past year.
None.
Okay. I haven't heard any, um, I mean, I think, you know, there's lots of talk about, you know, uh, what we've learned over the past year and, and things not going to back, you know, exactly the way they were before, and, and if, if we haven't learned anything, uh, from the past year, I, I'd say we, we, we probably have failed in some way, so, again, I, I think this is an improvement, um, you know, one great thing about ordinances is, if they don't work, we can always improve upon them and, and change them down the line, so, but, uh, that's my thoughts, but I did want to be very, very clear that, that the goal is to actually increase public input, uh, advance notice, uh, and opportunities for, for citizens to, to have, uh, direct input, uh, on, on development issues, and, uh, because they're, they're the ones that matter most, so. And, uh, because they're, they're the ones that matter most, so.
Mr. Carlin?
We can get some clarification from the attorney. Uh, Mr. Dyer, you mentioned approve it as presented, but then there was some extra language that you wanna include in the motion, is that correct? To make sure that we're.
Just to go ahead and adopt the process as been, uh, outlined, including the pro- public participation.
Thank you, sir.
Any further discussion?
I was just asking for me, I'm not gonna make the motion. Mr. Mayor, I'd make a motion that we, um, approve this as presented, the inclusion of adopting the process as outlined this meeting, including the public participation? Am I close enough, sir? Plus that, that's right.
Correct. So a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? All members voted for the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Patton. You removed item C, so we'll move on to the new business, business. We have one item, discussion of proposed waiver for Panera Bread. Mr. Dyer?
I was, I was contacted by the attorney who had worked on the Harris Group acquisition, and that, and now they are, uh, and it's actually a different entity, but it's still involved with them. Excuse me, to give you some, the reminder, when, uh, the city acquired the school board buildings and then deeded them to the Downtown Development Authority, uh, we put a easement on it to require 125 public spaces always be available. And that was defined as spaces reasonably available to the public. And, and then there were some other restrictions, uh, contained in the development agreement, but those were about the two buildings. They couldn't tear them down, they had to come for a master plan and all that. So those really wouldn't have applied to the Panera Bread anyway. So the restriction that applies to the Panera Bread is those parking spaces behind, uh, the Panera Bread building, which is number 12, are technically part of the restriction. So they're now looking to sell the property to a, a third party, not anybody affiliated with the group that's been involved up to now. And so they're asking that we release them from the deed restrictions, making it clear that their 12 spaces are not, don't have to be included in that 125. There are more than 125 other spaces. So the, the, the property that's being released is essentially the building and those 12 spaces right behind it, uh, where the drive-through cuts in, in the middle of it. So they're, they're asking that it be released. From my review of it, it doesn't appear that that's gonna affect anything other than, well, first of all, they're not gonna block off those 12 spaces. They're just not gonna be part of the 125. They're really always gonna be available to the public anyway. But, but they could put signs up saying reserved for Panera Bread. And that's, that would be the real practical effect of this. The, um, I think there is, they're trying to close on a sale, so if you're inclined to act, uh, they would appreciate you acting tonight. And then the Downtown Development Authority will have to release it as well.
I certainly understand that. I guess my concern is that, that we keep talking about these 125 spaces, but the spaces aren't indicated anywhere or in any way, they're not numbered. Um, I know there's some discussion about, you know, if a project happens there and some would move into the deck, if a deck is built there, um, so that, and now we're talking about releasing some from that 125. I mean, do we have any concerns that at some point that could be challenged because it's not? There's not clarity around that, or?
I'm, I'm not.
That we could lose those 125 spaces, or?
Oh, no, no, no. All your, this, this is, this document is very clear that it's just that property is being released from the restrictions. So the rest of the property remains restricted. Uh, for instance, with the parking garage, the city council is gonna have to do the same thing to allow those to count. Because you were, you were eliminating the 125, uh, and, and there is some flexibility in the document itself, the easement, which allows additional property to be purchased, and the spaces could go there. Um, it was just an, uh, the, the intent was to have available 125 spaces in that area.
Okay. Any other questions?
Go ahead.
Ms. Man?
Um, can you clarify, who's selling what?
Um, so the, the entity, and it, it's all different LLCs, so.
Right.
I, I, you know, the, the, I think it's H.I.P., they call it.
Uh-huh.
Which is Harris something Panera, I, I think, but, um.
So that's Panera?
H.I.P. Acquisitions LLC was who acquired the entire property. The school board buildings and, and the property, including the Panera. A year or so ago, they actually carved out the Panera property and created another LLC, probably to operate the Panera. I, I don't know that for sure. So it's already been separated out for ownership, they just didn't come back and ask for this release because it was the same people involved. So now they're proposing to sell it to a third party who has concerns about buying property that is restricted by deed.
And so we believe that the reason they're asking to do this is so those 12 spots could potentially be just for Panera customers.
That would be the pr- the practical effect, yes. I mean, obviously, they're not gonna put a gate up or block it, so it would allow them to do that, yes.
Gotcha.
Which they could've actually done already.
Right, I've always wondered.
Because there's 125 otherwise, so they could've already done that, and they could do that. The 125, by memory of it, that number came about, which would've allowed them to still reserve spaces around the buildings, if they wanted to, that there were more than enough, that they could've done it. So, the Panera could've already put up signs saying Panera Parking Only, and they would've still been okay.
And then the Panera Group is the one that's, they're putting this, getting this in order so that that makes that property more attractive for that part to be sold, with the Panera Building plus 12 spaces?
Yeah, and anybody that, uh, was gonna buy that property would want this release.
Yeah.
Uh, they, they wouldn't wanna be accepted or a part of that restriction.
So they would be buying those parking spaces also, I mean.
The property includes the spaces, yeah.
Include the parking spaces. Ms. Wilson?
I noticed in the paragraph right under number three, it says the municipal parties do not waive any of the restrictions that apply to the, uh, Harris property.
The rest of the property.
Right, so we would not be wa- waiving any of the 125 parking space restrictions.
Right, so the, the, this wouldn't work if there weren't 125 left.
Right.
But there, I don't remember the number, but it is well over 125.
Right.
In the other, there's a survey that shows how many spaces.
Right.
And, but you have to add up, you know, four plus three plus six plus eight, and, and I forgot the number and didn't write it down, so.
And you're saying that they need this approved as soon as possible?
I think they have a pending closing, yeah.
Okay, in, in, reading that paragraph that I read, that we're not waiving any of our original restrictions, I make a motion that we adopt the proposed waiver for Panera Bread.
Second, with the consideration too, we get $10.
I've been on a mission to stop putting that $10 thing in things.
So a motion and a second for discussion? Ms. McGrew?
And Mr. Dyer, uh, after Panera closes, would there be any, um, illegi- illegality of parking in their spots for, uh, First Friday or something like that?
I believe so. I mean, that's what, you know, it's, if, it's just like when you park in the bank parking lot or, or wherever, it's, if they may have a sign up, but if their business is closed, you feel comfortable doing that, and.
So that would be okay to park there, okay?
You know, whether Panera came and enforced their parking only would be the question, but yes, people will do it, we all know they will.
Panera's open for part of First Friday.
Right, but it closes at nine-ish.
So after that, you could, it would be public parking.
People park in my parking lot all the time for First Friday.
Oh, boy.
But they could.
But I don't have a sign.
It would be private party, uh, property, and they could put up a sign and said, you know, vehicles would be towed.
They could, yes.
Just make that clear, so.
Mr. Dyer, your, uh, your, your parking situation is a great topic for the retreat.
At one time, I offered, you could have one big parking lot with that lot beside my building and behind, and, and I was willing to do that.
$10.
$10.
Back to $10.
We'll give you 20. Any further discussion, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? All members voted for the motion.
Let them know, thank you.
Okay. Mr. Peppers?
I only have two items. The first is to let you know that we received notification officially LAP certified, um, for, uh, transportation projects. So, uh, Bethany Watson's been working on that certification process. Um, uh, Scott Hooper and, uh, Kelly Penley are our backups on that. That means that those projects where we are working with federal transportation dollars, such as the, the money that flows through the A R C for that State Route 140 area, we can manage those projects on our own, we don't have to partner with Cherokee County or with another entity, uh, to manage those projects. So that's a, a big win for us. It also allows us to apply for, um, projects that the federal government may have in the future related to transportation and recreation, that, uh, since we can administer those ourselves. That's been a process we've been working on for over a year now, so we're very excited to have that wrapped up. The second thing I want to let you know is that, um, we will have a return for about a week and a half of Marvel Studios downtown, but they're only gonna be filming one day in the Jones Building. Uh, there were a couple of shots that they wanted to get, uh, finished up in there that they missed. Um, there will not be any full road closures. Um, they will only have minimal impact on parking. They will have three generators this time instead of six generators. And the only time they will have, uh, the parking lot between the park and the Water Authority closes the one day that they're filming, which I believe is the 22nd. Uh, so it should not be nearly the impact that we had before, but we did wanna give them a chance to get in there and get finished with their project. That's all I have, unless you have any questions for me.
Questions for Mr. Peppers?
Thank you, and, uh, congratulations to Ms. Watson for certification, and, uh, appreciate her hard work. Uh, I have nothing. Uh, so I'll entertain a motion to adjourn to executive session to discuss, uh, personnel and litigation.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor, I, I did wanna make one announcement.
Good.
Uh, tomorrow morning at 10:00 a.m., the Charter Review Committee will be meeting, will be meeting virtually. And if any public would like to attend the meeting, they can do that by getting the dial-in number or the link from Mr. Peppers or Ms. Fortner. And of course, council should attend if you can. Uh, we'll be discussing everything that we've done so far, the changes to the, uh, charter. Uh, Mr. Dyer will be bringing forth that. And then the, if we don't need to meet again, fingers crossed, then we'll be able to bring, uh, a recommendation to the council may, and then, um, definitely talk about it as much as we need to, to agree on charter.
Awesome.
Tomorrow at 10:00 a.m.
Great work.
Motion to adjourn to executive session.
A motion, do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? We adjourn, thank you.